For the next five years, but you know, key part and I saw this in the presentation back, it just emphasizes that resilience. Um, that's it. I don't know how I was on time.
Perfect.
Cool. Thank you.
So, um, as I... Oh, Chris actually liked to come up with this.
Thank you.
So now I would like now to invite all of our speakers please. Joe, Django, Neil, and also some additional presenters who gave presentations today. Uh, Durrell, if you could come up and, um, we have another room then for, um,
So.
Don't you have a right number of people here?
Before we start, because three of the speakers, two of the panelists were in the separated rooms, they might not have been introduced to everyone. So, so Michael Jupe, Professor Michael Jupe from Victoria University, expert of membranes for separations and resource recovery. Then we have Leanna Downey, CEO of the Australian Conservation Society. And, and Durrell Hammond, entrepreneur from Pyrocal, who have been giving talks at different stages of the conference, but you might not have seen them before. Over, back over to you.
Thanks, Stefano. So the way we'll run this, we've got about an hour. I feel that there's probably a lot of questions that you'll have on the floor. So perhaps with the first half hour, I'd like to direct some individual questions to each of you. And then even, you know, from those responses, we'll probably generate even more questions because they've been really great presentations. So I will start with somebody who's got a microphone. Django, I, you're the lucky person and I really, I should feel quite, um, you know, the, the journey that Sydney Water has been on since 2018, I feel like I should be part of. So I, as I have a role of International Energy Agency's, um, Task Leader for Australia on Biogas. And I introduced, uh, Bill Woods to Bienergy Australia back in, I think, 2015 and yeah, so it was about a three year timeframe which then Sydney Water then deployed their own circular economy strategy. So I've been really, really keen to see how it's moving and also as a, um, Western Sydney-born girl who made a trip change up to Tauranga. Many of those places that you talked about, Quakers Hill and, you know, Warrigamba, all of those places, I know the constraints with the population that's grown since I moved in 99. So my question to you, um, Django is that, you know, putting a circular economy in action involves doing things differently. Right? And what are the major challenges that a large water utility like Sydney Water faces to do things differently in an already constrained operating environment?
Yeah, um, a big question. Uh, look, as somebody who spends their day to day trying to drive new approaches, um, it's, uh, well, at a personal entertainment level, I think it can be exhausting, is number one. It's, um, changes slow. Um, if you put that on the context of a large organisation and a, you know, a conservative utility organisation, um, then that becomes a bit harder again. Um, and then in the current climate, um, I can't speak for other utilities, but there's some common, I'm sure there's some common elements of the challenges that we face. But in Sydney Water, um, at the moment, it's a bit of a perfect storm in the sense that we have, uh, massive greenfield growth out in the west. Um, and that's, it's, it's a particularly difficult part of Sydney to service. Very, um, sensitive environment from a water perspective, major liability challenges, um, around heat, um, and transport and access to amenity. Um, so there's a huge challenge with the planning and the cost of delivering infrastructure, um, for greenfield growth. And at the same time, we're facing, um, a big backlog of renewal infrastructure. So our systems, you know, largely were built six to seven, eight years ago and we're facing, um, a lot of renewal. So for us, our investment programme has nearly tripled in the last few years. From six to seven hundred million up to over $2 billion a year of capital investment. Um, so with that backdrop, circular economy is challenging because the vast inertia and, um, the organisation is focused on those core servicing needs. Um, and, you know, we've got performance challenges within that. Uh, so it is difficult, but I think the silver lining in that is partly with greenfield growth. It's a bit of a clean slate to try things, uh, to try doing things differently. And we're absolutely grasping that opportunity, particularly around integrated water management. Um, uh, I guess though it's still, I think the message I would, I would say in terms of how to address these challenges, um, you know, finding opportunities, circular economy opportunities that really target the pain points in our organisation and deliver against some of those core needs while also getting wins on demonstrating that you can do things differently. Um, and yeah, bit by bit, yeah, demonstrating, just getting little wins and seeing the ripple effects of that.
Bit by bit is indeed, and I think, um, what the Western Corridor represents for Sydney Water is that, as you said, greenfield because it's changed so much even from mineral paddocks to, I think it's...
It's still paddocks.
Well, you've got space for the time and it's about how you cordon up those pockets still before they get, yeah. So I think, um, I'd like to then lead on to one of your interesting case studies was, um, around your, um, um, one of our parkland, ultimately. And I think it's a nice segue into Leanna, your presentation around what is biodiversity or what circular economy can do for biodiversity. And, um, you know, Django, you, you mentioned that part of that parkland, you had a biodiversity piece there. So, you know, I was really, um, really appreciative of Leanna's your presentation this morning about giving some insights and circular economy approaches for protecting biodiversity in nature. Because, you know, whilst we think about how you, um, you know, circular economy is about reducing waste, turning resources into something valuable, but there is an impact, hopefully a positive one, as you said, on actually improving biodiversity. But what came, what I pulled out of your presentation with your dream, and I'd like to ask a little bit more about your dream because I think it's, it's really essential. For those who weren't, wasn't aware, in Leanna's, um, presentation, what Leanna spoke about was her dream to make manufacturers responsible for a complete life cycle. So it's putting in that LCA and I would see that as, um, important stewardship essentially, isn't it? Um, so from the Australian Conservation Foundation's point of view, how, how do you make sure that these structural changes are actually embedded into Australian legislation? Thank you. Uh, and thanks for those presentations just now. Also really fascinating in getting to the heart of some of this complexity. Um, I think the Australian Conservation Foundation is really only starting to think, uh, at that next level now about the, the kind of system change that we need to drive. And part of the reason, you know, there's an opportunity to come and talk today is to help elevate the idea that these changes and shifts, the reason we have the system that we have today with the constraints that we have today. And I, for those of you who were not there this morning, I talked about the, the issue with our current capitalist model means that we don't accurately allocate costs. And that means we have kind of broken incentives, which means we have the outcomes that we have, which is we have unrestrained resource consumption and we have pollution where there's a whole lot of cost associated with pollution that then not formed by the manufacturers. So we consume at high levels because goods are cheap, but they're not really cheap. They're just, they're just cheaper the way it's expressed. So, um, the, the challenge in that system is that those who benefit the most are companies and they are very strongly motivated by the current structure to maintain that status quo. And so that's why I think it's such an important conversation to recognise that it's actually a collective responsibility for citizens and that is in all of our capacities. So whether you're a scientist or whether you're working in government or whether you're working, uh, in, in any other context, to keep articulating to the governments of the day that this is the system that we want, that we want a more sophisticated, mature circular system that recognises planetary constraints. Because even though we might have a government who has a short-term timeframe or a, uh, an organisation and a company who is operating to try and maximise shareholder value in a short timeframe, we as humans recognise that we are operating in longer timeframes. And the only way you kind of get through those boundaries is by participating in those conversations. And I had a really interesting conversation with somebody in a scientist role at another institution recently who said, but can we be advocates as scientists? You know, should we be advocates? And I think scientists and researchers and policymakers must be advocates because we have facts and information about how systems operate and we know that we can do better than we currently are. So I think ACF is about empowering individuals to act collectively for those, those, those system changes. Very response. Thanks, Leanna. Um, I'd like to move now toward that, that interplay between industry and researchers and the, um, you know, the roles we serve. Um, so I'm going to pick on you, Durrell, this morning, your presentation this morning. You, um, spoke about the various ways for which, um, you know, Pyrocal have done, um, implemented the continuous carbon foundation technology, um, you know, at various scales, whether it be in developing nations like Vietnam and Haiti, where you had to really fit the purpose kit that was very useful versus a large, well, a demonstration, even though it's, you know, it's a larger utility like Logan Home. Um, but, you know, you do, you said you do your in-house research, um, to get some really, you know, quick results. And, you know, you're currently partnering with us to continue that, that type of research. But you also mentioned that it's really, um, you know, what we need to do as researchers is to become more applied uh, in terms of meeting industry, um, demands. So some comments to broaden your, your point around that for all of the researchers here.
Where's the exit?
Active water, resulting here.
No, it's not that bad, but I, I think, um, there's, there's a whole, there's so many moving parts to what we're talking about in circularity. It doesn't, you know, it's wheels within wheels. It's the Olympic rings, whatever, all sorts of things. Um, but fundamentally, one of the things we're doing is we've been disruptive to those current business models that exist. And, and we've just got to muscle up to that. And the best way to do that is to get runs on the board, you know, that scoreboard pressure. It, it's really worth something. It's tangible. And in business, we need to do that through application and opability as quickly as we possibly can. So from a research perspective, if we can look to utilise our current capabilities, current resource mix and upgrade that to betterment, that gives us a foundation and a platform for the basic research to, to, to build on. I think the other way around, it's just too hard to get momentum. So we've, we've got to build momentum and that, that takes courage and risk. And we've just got to be courageous and be prepared to take a risk and, and take a chance. And so I've, I've just noted a couple of examples. You know, I've talked in my talk this morning about improving fertiliser use efficiency. And use, use the statement that we currently over-apply, we're over-applying fertiliser to account for known inefficiency, you know, by a magnitude greater than two to one. So numerically, very simply, if we improved through some simple fertiliser and efficiency enhancement, five percent on nitrogen for urea. So in the Australian context, we import 2 million tonnes of urea a year for agricultural use. If we improved our, um, fertiliser, or nitrogen use efficiency on that by five percent, recognising at the moment we're between somewhere 30 to 50% efficient in a soil system. There's, that's not a big, not a big target, but numerically, it's $80 million at the farm gate. It's three vessels, three ships, it's 100,000 trucks. It's, it's a target that's very achievable, very quickly. It builds a foundation, $80 million. So in this room, if you could get half of that for research funding, you'd be very happy people. They're the sorts of targets I think we need to, to go after and they're, they're achievable very quickly. They are disruptive, no doubt about that. And, but, you know, we're, we're ready for disruption. The community's wanting some disruption, whether it's, what is the rest of the question?
Look, it's a broad enough question just to say around, you know, how do we change the approach that we do as researchers, um, in the formulating project ideas, the type of research that we do that actually does make those changes happen quicker than what they might do to have that change. So how do we really work with industry better to formulate research projects which are industry-led?
Well, I think industry's got a big part to play in that. And, you know, I'm, as you know, I'm not the greatest fan of some of the R and D corporations that, um, spend enormous amounts of money with their own little circular economy. So, anyway, I've just said I can't unsay that. But, but, but it's a fact and, you know, we've, we've just got to stand up and hold people to account. And, and I'm, I see it on boards, you know, I'm happy to, to chair a couple of boards independently and I'm happy to sack directors who don't perform it, where they've just had paid their resume, turn up, whatever. You know, we've got to hold each other to account. And, you know, the standard you accept is the one that you walk past or rather the other way around. The one you, you walk past is one you accept. You know, we've got to call out behaviour that's, you know, unbecoming. But in, in a research sense, it is, it is about spending our money wisely and, and looking for a return. And, and I'm going to, again, I'm going to say something again that isn't probably very popular in research, but I hate reading research reports where the closing line says, "This topic needs more research." If we, if we get, get conclusions happening, get some action happening, we're, we're going to turn things around. I, I really worry, you know, people ask me, "What do I think about climate change?" And I say, "Oh, I'm not sure what to think about climate change, but I'm very, very worried about, um, our declining biodiversity, very worried about it, both, um, in, in all of our systems, but especially the microbial one because it's out of style." And, you know, I think, um, you know, there's things that we can all do to improve that. You know, we've just got to stand up and, and be brave, be courageous, say what we think and, and not shirk from that. So if you've got to turn it up.
Thank you for being courageous, Durrell, as I already know you will be. So I think that'd be a good transition to a question that I'd like to ask you, Mike, but, yeah. As a researcher myself, you know, we do try to work as best we can with industry. And, um, you know, we have within our own internal institutions of, um, rubber legs for which we'll, uh, stop perhaps tech transfer happen with more, you know, as quickly as what we'd like. And so my question, I guess, is to share some of your own challenges, particularly in the commercialisation sense. Um, and, and, or how you can maybe describe some of your successes in commercialisation and maybe some of those ones which you'd like to get about.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. So, yeah, thanks. It's interesting. So as a, I guess a researcher with Bernadette on the, on the, on the floor here, um, just to share some experience of, I mean, who's my dream and interest always to be working with industry and looking at how our research, um, can be applied into, into practice. Um, and so, you know, sort of got early in the process of patenting and then commercialising. And, um, you know, it hasn't been the perfect road, um, but I know see through patents when you go through and they get challenged and so forth and getting that experience. But, um, I guess the thing that I've found in that process, ultimately, you've got to have good people in our very prestigious organisations who want to do everything in a certain way. Um, but to have, you know, people who see where you want to go and willing to support you within the university to move things forward, because I think if you follow all the procedures within the university, I don't think anything would get done, to be honest.
Yes.
And I think we all, everyone in the industry has procedures internally. But, um, but, yeah, I think in commercialisation, it's, you know, it's, it's really about relationships. It doesn't always go well, um, but I've been quite lucky that, um, you know, ultimately where things have gone have moved in a positive direction. But most importantly, working with industry, I think, is, you know, the one that was raised here is that, um, the process of researchers to want to, um, uh, do everything in a particular completeness and to do it and take the time to do it, it doesn't time with the, for the industry to go and take the result and adopt it and, um, gradually, um, you know, improving my skills to work better in that way. But I think there's a, um, a general mismatch between the two industries. So I think research could be better applied if we could move at the pace that the industry needs that result, particularly now because of our urgent situation to adopt, you know, reach net zero by 2030, 35, 2050, whichever day, whichever year it is, it's not far away. Particularly for a research lifecycle from idea to implementation.
Thanks. Um, and I think it, um, it goes both ways. Sometimes as researchers, we need to be courageous and I know that we have where, you know, we work with our, um, our legals, our, um, research partnerships. And I know there's times when I've had to sort of say, "Well, you know, they're actually sort of calling to account." I, I had one, my own experience where a grower was desperately wanting to utilise an app for the, um, you know, the industry and it was basically a release of an algorithm and it had a short timeframe for which they could actually test it in the field before they, uh, lose the cotton growing season. And I said, "Well, if you say to our research partnerships guys in the university who have no idea what the implications might be, then they won't, they'll still sit on looking at terms and conditions for the next six months." So I'd say, "Well, if you don't do this now, the Australian farm community will miss out on this and we'll have to go over to the northern hemisphere." And so they go, "Oh, okay. So if you put it in that context, they'll find ways of speeding things up."
Yeah.
So, um...
That's a good advice outside for this internal selling of, uh, projects.
Correct. And it's probably more internal advocacy than you might think. And that's sometimes what pushes.
Yeah. I mean, I had a shocking story, like, you know, but things have to move fast with relation to contract negotiation, for example, to that one. So one of our contract managers said, "Oh, it's, it's only been a week since, uh, since we got the response." We, we would respond and then, uh, they would, the industry would respond, like, within two days, right? Because these things are really important to move them through. But the university says, "Oh, it's, it's only been a week," you know. So I thought, I think the kind of the, the urgency to, to move things fast internally and then prioritise them is probably maybe needs a bit of work in universities.
And, and it is a true thing. And, um, I guess from a university perspective, we do like to work with industry the best way, but universities are a large beast and sometimes don't work in the quickest way. Um, so, you know, the presentations that both Neil and Joe have put forward all relate to a, a single theme around, um, you know, reducing, um, emissions and, and getting to net zero. And, um, you know, Joe, how we're working with you, um, university and, and Pyrocal around a part of, um, you know, one piece of the puzzle has been really good, I know. But, you know, the, um, you know, when we were talking about your issues as in Logan Homes, it's, um, quite hard to understand really what getting to zero net is. And of course, one of the outcomes is what we, you know, have seen over the last few days is that, um, you know, putting circular economy into action is actually combating climate change. But, and, you know, for both Sydney Water and Logan Home, getting to net zero is going to be a big driver to implement circular economy technologies. However, it's complex. Can you share some of the challenges you're facing in getting there?
Um, I think from a water perspective, it's an interesting one because we call our treatment plants place water treatment plants. It's in the name, isn't it? Um, so we need to do a whole rebrand of what we're actually doing at the treatment plant facility. So it's more around, you know, resource recovery. Um, and it's really looking at everything that we determine as a waste stream we're going, how we actually make them into a product. Um, and that in turn looks at things about making it locally sourced and reducing our carbon emissions. It has all these added-on benefits. Um, but again, it's hilarious because it's kind of linked to the research side of it as well because we can't just make these products and then say, "These are the product, but because it was once a waste." So we have to know what's actually sensible. Um, do a lot of research into the, the, the start and to say, "Is this a proper technology? Um, and will this actually make something that is a saleable product in our local area too?" Because you kind of don't want to be shipping it overseas or going, um, across state lines. You know, you can't do it, um, because that increases your carbon emissions again. So it's this whole thing around looking at it from, uh, I don't want to steal the term, ecosystems. Um, but it's sort of looking at it from that perspective and going, "Okay, um, yes, renewable energy's an easy hit, like an easy hit for everyone to go down." But then it's, um, access to the grid and then there's all these added-on issues around looking at things like that. So, um, again, it requires a whole team, requires a lot of research and requires a lot of industry partners to actually be able to achieve, um, these areas. And it's really around that sector long we've been sales.
Thanks, Durrell. And lastly, Neil, you gave a great presentation in that session around the challenges of a council like the city of Sydney, a big one. And, you know, it's sort of born in this, the city and, um, seen it grow exponentially. And, um, what I've seen since, you know, moving up to, to the regional city is actually how a growing population has actually made change. And I see that from an international perspective, in that what's going to drive adoption of technology is basically critical mass, this population. And I'm seeing this with some of the adoption, um, pieces that is happening. Um, but my question to you, you know, we had a chat, you said that you, it's, it's about, um, making sure that you're putting the, um, time in the areas that make the biggest impact and that you're constantly struggling with, um, you know, push and pull in terms of operations and seeing the best efficiency. So can you share some challenges, um, that you face in, um, operating under such a framework that you described in your presentation?
Really good question. It's similar challenges, but you've just said about procurement and contract, like, um, that's sort of, I think, in any organisation where you're... Um, that's sort of, I think, in any organisation or any large organisation, um, the internal messaging and trying to get that through and, and, um, you know, there is this amazing idea, but, um, highlighting that in the right way to the right user. Um, I'm often to my team, it's not, um, who you say it, but how you say it. And so, uh, even I went and did an accounting degree so I could talk to, um, the CFO so I could talk in his language and, you know, really push the sustainability principles with him. Like a talk in a way that he understands. And so one of my biggest challenges is, is because, seriously, I've got luxury cities, he has that embedded culture. We want sustainability, um, which other organisations, you know, might not necessarily have. So the biggest challenge for the team is just that messaging, internal messaging on what benefit is this going to have? And it's not necessarily about saving costs, but it's being open and transparent. So if a lot of the projects are, are being open and transparent, this might not necessarily have an economic benefit. This is the impact it's going to have on your P and L or, or relevant areas, is this something that you're going to do? As soon as you, you're able to have that transparency, things just open up. But if you're, if I just, if I'm not open about that, you know, and, and show, let's say my sustainability had too much and go, no, this is the right thing for the environment, we should be doing it. You just can't get that internal message in. So, um, that's always a push and pull challenge of how you drive that to, to, to really achieve the outcomes we're trying to work towards.
Great. So we've got really half an hour. Um, I'd like to throw the rest of the half an hour out to the audience. So we've got a rolling mic. That's me, is that right? But there is a question, um, ready? We do, we have, maybe.
A hard and long problem, the Queensland. Um, really good presentation. Yeah, excellent to learn from your perspective. So, um, I'm interested that Niall and Django both presented, especially now presented a net zero strategy from City of Sydney. So, and you also mentioned about some, uh, like the storm water reuse and that's related to city water. So I'm curious, I'm very interested to learn what's the position of water industry in your, like, overall strategy to reach net zero? How important is, um, what you can use? I understand you also have like that view, et cetera, all those.
It's a really, really good question. And, and so because of the complexities of different local councils, um, it's extremely important. Like we, you know, we're in a, um, heading into our next drought and, and you can see we've got water targets where we don't want to be increasing water. Um, but we realise as City of Sydney, that's not where our expertise is. So we could either try and build up, you know, expertise in the water space or form strategic sort of partnerships. So what we've identified and what we've started doing over recent years is actually working with Sydney Water. Ironically, we haven't met, but, um, we know lots of colleagues, um, to work with them. Um, because then, you know, the, the strategy that Sydney Water are doing and the vision that they've got, where it's sort of really aligning to say, well, actually their expertise is in that spot. Um, we have the infrastructure like stored water or we have recycled water, but where we see is actually a partnership, you know, but we're in a different operating environment where we're not competitors. If they, if, um, Sydney want to do something, then they're better at, you know, it's, um, no issue with us. So in that space, what we really want to form is those strategic partnerships. We've identified, um, areas and then just leverage our knowledge.
That's really interesting. I'm just looking at from your perspective, um, Joe, when you've got, you know, well, Logan City and Logan Water, they come up, right, they have to be. But you formed a strategic, um, there was a, maybe no longer there with Downer, was there? And, yeah, that maybe just share some of those, um, insights around the alliance.
Um, so we're in the third iteration, um, so our local water structure is, it's, um, wholly owned by council. Um, majority council workers, but we've got a partnership with Downer. And, um, through that is WSP and Stan Day. Um, so it's the third time we've done a partnership. Um, and it goes through that tender pressures. But the reason that it started at the beginning was that we had a massive influx of growth into, into Logan and just the capital works programme was.
So initially, I'm not aware it's the Gold Coast, basically.
Yeah, yes, we, we got a portion of the Gold Coast and a portion of, um, what would have been classified every utility that's seen it growing, kind of bogey, desert kind of area and then high population. So, um, what that meant was is that, uh, we either had to up our workforce or, um, form a strategic alliance and through that, that was, um, how the partnership got formed.
Any other questions?
Wouldn't want adding, adding on the partnership bit because it was something I meant to touch on in my presentation a little bit because it's, I'm not sure if you remember the diagram I put up. A partnership is absolutely the centre of our circular economy strategy. Um, and not just from a, you know, workforce standpoint, we've been doing that for a long time. But when it comes to, I, I probably use the eco-industrial precinct as a, as an example. Um, the complexity of trying to orchestrate a, a, uh, a development like that with, um, you know, potentially five to ten different, um, corporate entities coming into, it, it's extremely complex and it's, it's only works, you know, I think with a, an open book type, type of approach to partnering. Um, so we're working through that at the moment, we're far from solved it, but it is, it is a really fundamental aspect to a circular economy, um, projects, I think, yeah. Um, it's, it's possibly even harder for a state-owned corporate corporation or a public entity that has much stricter requirements, you know, privacy and, and all of that. But that's another layer.
Good for you, I brought it to Rob once this week.
I just wanted to, um, pick up on something, a number of people have, Joe's had to explain where Logan is a number of times and, and it's worth, worth mentioning. I talked about courage and risk earlier. You know, Logan City Council took on a massive risk in being the first, not only in Australia, but for the type of facility they put in, certainly in the world, in, in putting in their gasification facility. Pyrocal was only a fairly small part of that, we're about twenty percent of the project, but we're at the heart of it. So in terms of design, integration and so forth, we had a fairly significant involvement and ongoing operability. But we, we get called a couple of times a week from northern hemisphere countries asking about the Logan project. Um, and these are from cities like New York, Philadelphia, Mexico City, um, Berlin, Stockholm. And, and it, it's fascinating. So, you know, Logan have certainly, um, kicked a big goal in terms of marketing. But, um, they, it, it's really important to talk about the success or the accolades that that project received. You know, it received, um, a, a number of awards in Australia, Engineering Australia Award for, um, innovative project. Um, the Queensland Water Industry Award for major infrastructure in the city, the Australian Water Industry Award for innovation, and it got third prize in the International Water Awards in Copenhagen, um, I think, I don't know, twelve months ago. You know, that, that's significant. And we as Australians tend not to celebrate that quite well enough, but internationally, I can tell you, it's, it's really hit the radar.
And if I could just make a, I guess, a point around an observation I'm making across every one of you here. Um, the adoption of technology in a circular economy often involves a first of a kind. And if I can share a, even a, a story that I haven't showed with you, Django, um, about, I published a piece in The Conversation, um, to celebrate Australia's first bio-methane, um, plant from Malabar and the partnership with Jaminar. And it was part of, I know, advocacy as a researcher, but also, um, representing Australia in the International Energy Agency by as task. And I had, um, and it was in response to a criticism that was put out by another researcher that came out in The Guardian, that, um, and so it was in reply to that. They were saying, well, you know, as water utility is creating methane, you tell me what sort of, um, you know, benefits there are there. And, you know, in Australia, gas is referred to as dirt.